And then.
Recording in progress.
Thank you.
All right, I would like to bring the town council regular meeting for July nineteen to twenty one to order. Roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
President.
Counselor Mellon. Counselor Gardner is excused, counselor Tulawitzki. And President Kulturitis.
President.
Four counselors are present, so we have a forum.
Thank you. We stand for a moment of silence and. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everyone for attending tonight. We actually have National Night Out proclamation. Proclamation of the Munster Town Council proclamation recognizing the National Night Out. Whereas the Munster Police Department and Choice Community Council of Munster are sponsoring a drug and violence prevention program on August third, two thousand twenty one, entitled The National Night Out Against Crime Celebration. And whereas Munster's twenty sixth annual National Night Out Against Crime Celebration provides an equal opportunity for Munster residents, businesses, schools, community organizations to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of Munster be aware
Thank you.
of the importance of crime prevention programs, the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Munster. And whereas police community partnerships, their blood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important things of the National Night Out program. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the town, by Munster Town Council that Tuesday, August thirty, two thousand twenty one, is recognized as National Night Out Against Crime in Munster, Indiana. And it be further proclaimed that all citizens of Munster are called upon to join the Munster Police Department, Choice Community Council of Munster, Munster businesses, schools, and community service organizations, and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting Munster's twenty sixth annual National Night Out Against Crime Celebration on August third. City Council.
Mr. President. I move that we pass and adopt the proclamation recognizing the National Night Out.
For a second.
I'll say.
On the favor.
Aye.
Passes and adopted by the town council of the town of Munster, Lake County, Indiana, in July nineteen, two thousand twenty one, by the vote of four in favor and another opposed.
Yes, it is.
All right, that brings us down to the public comment. First of public comments, it's limited to two minutes maximum per person or five minutes per spokesperson. Please keep your comments civil and constructive to public policy issues. The chair at its own discretion may recognize officials wishing to speak on different topics area of time and may appeal to the public session. All speakers will be timed by the clerk treasurer's office immediately shall not exceed twenty minutes of the comments. They also be submitted electronically. If you have a question or comment about an item on the agenda, please email the question or comment to eanderson@munster.org. Mr. Anderson will ensure that all submissions are shared with the elected officials of the town. Submission will also be entered into the minutes of the meeting. So comments civil and constructive on the policy issue. If anybody wishes to speak tonight, please come to their podium stage of name and address.
It may not be on yet yet.
Matt Aloni, fifteen twenty four, McCartville Boulevard, Munster. I'm here proudly on behalf of the South Shore Convention and Visitors Authority to present you guys with a check of twenty thousand dollars. It's the result of a lot of hard work. Fire Board members, Chairman Abe Poonell, Vice Chairman Brett Frazier, the entire floor. As you've seen in news, there's a lot going on over there. We're heading in a great direction, so I just want to bring this check first.
No.
I'll touch it if you can slide it over.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks, man, for all your help in helping us secure that as well. And the town did have to write a proposal to acquire the funds and they're going to use it towards some of their festivals in the fall. And the South Shore Visitor Convention Authority will get appropriate credit and acknowledgement for that. So thank you so very much.
Anybody with, anybody else wish to speak tonight? Is there anybody online?
There is no one online and Mr. And Mr. Anderson shared nothing. I mean, he shared, there was no public comment to share at the meeting.
Thank you. I will close. I'm so sorry, sir.
I don't know where to bring up this point of order. There's a question about spyglass that we talked about last time. And I looked at documentation, I don't see any. I went for a cost benefit analysis and I could not see it. So should I ask you that comes to that topic or?
You're pretty much letting us know that you've been trying to buy out of cost analysis.
Yes, I see there are other cameras that are actually doing this, but I don't see the exact quality of that.
Can I have your name and address, please? Hold on, Mr. Thomas.
Thomasville, T H O, Indiana.
Thank you. Okay. And we'll provide a little more information about the spyglass at that time. But you, this is the appropriate time for you to speak, so thank you, thank you.
If anybody else wants to speak tonight. I propose the, to the public, that brings us down to the consent agenda. Mr. President, I will. Second. Session.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulawitzki. President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Accepted four to zero.
Thank you. There's nothing other whole business, break to the business. Item A is Munster's special Hammond Water Works purchase itself.
All right. We have Mr. McGimsey here from the Denton, Bingham, and Greenbaum firm, and they'll provide a little bit of background.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Abe McGimsey. I'm part of Denton, Greenbaum, and Greenbaum Council. To town council, of all the core other customer committees, that's the same thing as the water works department and its evaluation. And what you have before you, you have a settlement agreement that settles all the estate litigation between the home trades, as well as a new long term order purchasing. These were both highly negotiated and litigation very contentious and sort of, I mean, think about it. Good resolution that gets you a significant discount from what you're going to charge for the next ten years and it's also for terms of the rates beyond. That's in a nutshell. What is to be settled and agreed with. Have any questions?
Is there any council persons?
There's a big difference between two thousand twenty one and two thousand thirty.
Yeah. We're going back and forth on this for a while. Represent the best of them. So I really appreciate everything you guys have for us.
I would note that even, that the big difference between two thousand twenty three and twenty fourteen that the rate in twenty thirty is still significantly lower than what you would have. Wasn't two dollars, almost two hundred and forty cents. So you guys, that's a bit longer. We would take our residents.
Finally, comment, would you speak to, to Mr. McGimsey and the firm for leading our community, but also getting the other communities around us to be a unified front. I understand that you had mentioned it was contentious, but I understand that the city Hammond was trying to move quite quickly, which would have been in their favor. And working together, we were able to file some motions, slow that process down so that we could have a deeper look and analysis. And ultimately came out with a much better result for the community. And if we've read back at the news you can use over the past, you may remember a graph that shows across the state of Indiana what our wholesale water rates are, it's the town of Munster. And it's very far to the left hand side of giving them the pay much less than many other communities. And even after, finally after the question that was adjusting the water prices up, we're still in one of the lowest rates in, in, in state.
Cooperation of the.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Back to council.
Mr. President, I would claim that we approved the settlement agreement and mutual release between town council, the city of Hammond and the Hammond Water Works Department. And move that we approve the purchase agreement between the Department of Water Works and the town of Munster and the Water Works Department.
Have both motions on one or the.
You can, but ideally.
So I would like to amend my motion, and I'll start with the first one, which is to approve the settlement agreement and mutual release between the town of Munster, city of Hammond and the Hammond Water Works.
Very excited.
I'll say my motion.
Any discussion?
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulawitzki.
Yes.
And President Kulturitis. Four to zero to accept.
I would like to move to approve the purchase agreement between the Department of Water Works of the town of Munster, Indiana and Hammond Water Works Department.
For a second.
Yes.
Second. Any discussion?
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulawitzki.
Yes.
And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Four to zero to accept.
Thank you. That brings down item B, B dash thirty six, two two nine, change order zero three zero, overrun and under run items.
Lee. Yes, good evening, Lee Random with D L Z. So presenting to you this evening is a change order required by INDA, the Department of Transportation, at the completion of all their contracts or any contract items that are equal to or greater than plus or minus twenty thousand dollars. So included under this change order are a total of twenty four items on the contract on Boyd District. If you would like, I'll be happy to go to each and every one of those separately. Or if you have any questions regarding those, however you'd like to do that. Perhaps your determination on that. We, I.
I've read them.
We read this before. Sure, I mean, I can run through them real quick if you like, or if there's specific questions you have, I'll certainly be happy to answer those. However, I, I, I have just one question. Certainly, how many more change orders are we going to be getting? There is, there's thirty one, there's thirty one that will be coming. That will be for the repair of the architectural surface treatment of wall four, which was the, let's call it westbound traffic on the north side of forty fifth. There was a unreported accident, someone drove right into that wall. On the way. And then I will have another item, structure backfill, which is for pipe. I didn't miss one. There's a total of one hundred and sixteen pipe runs up and down here, I wanted to verify. I don't want to see a pretty face for a while. And, well, hopefully not, but there are some outstanding, unfortunately, light poles getting hit. There's like vehicle magnets, unfortunately. So there are, I believe we're waiting on parts to be re, re street lights, normal street lights. So really until we get those repaired now. One of those dates back as far as like August of last year. The contractor still has not received parts for that. I don't know what the story is. I very recently received a letter stating that they could anticipate delivery October fifth. So, I mean, it's already been ridiculously long. There's normally like a three month lead time. We've obviously exceeded that. So I still have to work with them on that, but I'm guessing that we can at least, you know, accept the contract, the other components, but we won't be able to fully accept the contract until all the replacement parts have been in place.
Are all the street lights in the general area of the council or?
No, there, there's two east of the underpass and then there are two, well, it's actually three at the intersection of forty fifth. Two are knocked down. And one just recently. I tried to, but we didn't do it very good, unfortunately.
I have a question. Do you have any suggestions on how, if this is going to be a common occurrence, do you have any suggestions on how we might protect light poles because that's, that's an ongoing maintenance that's going to be.
Yeah, I mean.
You're going to have to. I, and it's odd, that's what's happening. I just wonder, are you seeing a reason why in those spots based on your experience or?
No, I mean, they're, they're beyond the clear zone. God curving butter there, so it's not a mountable curve. So anyone striking these poles do significant damage to their vehicle because they have to get over the curve to be hit. Most of these cases, there have been, I'd say alcohol.
Substance.
Some type of substance, unfortunately, but I, I don't know aside from, it's an ornamental pole. Put something out there protected. I don't know that could necessarily be doing that.
Right. Okay. Worth asking.
No, I understand. I mean, it's just a shame that you are assuming we, you know, kind of regroup and move fast one. It seems like there's another one almost every couple of months. I'm sure that there are. Yeah.
Is there a sort of treatment, like concrete pylon or something?
I mean, I guess you could put lollards up, but you know, again, that's, they're in the parkway. I don't know, lollards, that must have to, in that case, that whole area, the parkway, the concrete, so that you have some type of a foundation for the lollards and so protect them.
Put those potted floor.
Exactly, well.
Safe paddles out there.
Oh, you're right.
I hope people do put large folders of, you know. Something.
Right, they just are projects. All right, I just don't know if anything is necessarily.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. So, again, if there's any questions with this change order, particular items.
My question was more in general than particular items. Looks like we're at nine point one percent, one, two percent will hold on to the project.
Correct.
I understand like ten percent is about the limit.
Typically, we see five, ten percent generally speaking.
Right. So just thinking back on the project from way back when it began, are there any lessons learned or things could have been done differently in the estimating to try and drive that under account? I know INDA have funding, like there are different funding sources, but all these changes.
Well, I mean. Including that nine point one percent was, was the speed of it last year, the end of last year. There is acceleration. So. It follows, yeah. If I take the acceleration, if it's choice of the council, they, if I take the acceleration out. It's, it's equivalent to this change order, so it actually was a little bit more.
So it's not as large as.
First, each question, I want to, there are items that make them look higher than. See, that we all.
So we'd be more like effectively running.
Yeah, the biggest portion of this, if you recall, was the stabilization of space. There was a significant amount of, you know, there's a serious predominant clay. Moisture content was loaded with highs and there were. Typical sections.
And so if we do a project like this, again, I would, we would know better that there's higher moisture contents in our town and we'd be, we'd be wise to estimate.
I would recommend some type of soil modification so that that is out in advance. They use lime, they use cement, things of that nature that you can add to the existing soil that will split that and stabilize it as opposed to, you know, not the, which was, which was. But it's, I can get. Probably perhaps a little bit more benefit from costly. It's just a matter of getting that non-draughted and the equipment and materials lined up and things. So that's something you can do. Hey, this is what we want to do. When are you available? That might have worked, you know, down the road for us, but not initially.
Soil, moisture, clay, and acceleration are two of the main drivers. Is there anything else, leave it, we jumpstart.
Oh.
No, those were our, our big dollar items. Well, likewise, I would certainly like the last comments. You and the, and the team kept us really well informed. Extremely well informed that every council meeting and many communications in between great parties of the council would be able to understand what's going on across our councils. And that's very much appreciated. Be happy to know.
Cute little eyes. I completely understated.
At least.
Unfortunately, we're still going to see your face. Right?
Thank you, sir. All right, bring it back to the council.
President, I'll make a motion to approve change order number zero three zero, contact B three six two two nine and the amount to two hundred and thirty one thousand five hundred and four dollars forty five cents.
For a second. Discussion.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulawitzki.
Yes.
President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Four zero. Thanks, Lee.
I go as telecom.
And this was on the agenda previously. And Counselor Tulawitzki had asked some questions regarding it. So both Mr. Anderson and myself did a little bit of additional follow up, no cost benefit analysis. However, the communities that Mr. Anderson spoke with, they all spoke positively of their experience with spyglass and they felt that they received appropriate benefit from the audit. And then I contacted Spyglass to answer your question specifically. And he said, we currently average twenty six percent reduction in monthly spend across all clients that they work with. For example, we performed an audit and identified eighteen thousand and potential savings, which the town elected to implement seventeen. So that could be our expenditure.
That was my smart.
That, yes, and it's a local, so it's very similar. On the other hand, when we worked with a, with a community in Illinois, they identified forty seven in potential annual savings and they chose to only implement thirty thousand. And what can account for some of that is perhaps there's hotspots that aren't being used. And I know that's a small piece of a bigger pie. And the recommendation from Spyglass was to cut that. And yet we decided to keep that hotspot and continue to pay for it for whichever employee that is. So that's the type of thing that falls in there. The other change is that our, the representative, the sales director, he offered us the opportunity, if we decide to move forward with this, we can break it into two payments, one in calendar year twenty twenty one for the three months approximately that we would implement the savings in the remaining nine months in twenty twenty two. Upon discussion with the controller, we think that we can absorb it all in twenty twenty one. And so it's better to pay early and pay, you know, while we have cash in hand. So should they detect any? I, I do think that we run a pretty tight ship. I'll be curious to see what they come up with because there's a number between impact, the clerk treasurer's office and the town manager's office, that those invoices get quite a bit of scrutiny, but there's taxes and fees that we may not be aware of, so.
Our analyst, taking a second. So I would make a motion to authorize the town manager assignment agreement and letter of agency to partner with Spyglass.
For a second.
I'll say.
Discussion.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulawitzki. And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Four to zero.
Item B, Broadmore Avenue, emergency paving. Very much with the half issue with a water main breaks. I think it's resolved, so. That's in a nutshell.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the paving proposal for milestone contractors north in the amount of twenty one thousand seven hundred and eighty five dollars. The paving project will be funded through the straight for surfacing fund two five eight dash nine one five zero one six four nine seventeen.
For a second.
I'll say that.
Very discussion.
Just the kind of obvious comment, the water main breaks are something that come up very often. We're keeping our eye on them and when there's emergency action. Position that we can do.
Of course, we have two of them within a short period of time, so this has to be resolved.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulawitzki.
Yes.
And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Just down to item E, AC equipment rental agreement.
I know just a little bit about this. It's, it's just that we do not have a piece of equipment large enough to do the project. AC construction is offered to loan us one of their bigger pieces and this helps offset the cost of gas and, and just to use that piece of equipment. Anything else?
Absolutely. Very others. Please.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Stephen, got the public purse director. And on this topic, I think three things might be of interest to the council regarding the car to be on situation. As you know, there was a significant rain event on two nights, June twenty four and June twenty six, causing carbon to, to rise and overflow at one point. Our two pumps that we had renovated back in two thousand eighteen didn't seem to do the job. And so we had to bring in two additional six inch pumps just to tread water, so to speak. Even with that, it wasn't really receding until the rain stopped. So we did a page of the week after we convened internally to discuss what's going on with that pump station. We identified several things. One thing that came under suspicion right away, and it was an observation that our fighter chief brought to our attention. It seemed as if the water was just merely recycling, no sooner had we pumped it out, it was coming back in. And so that pointed to perhaps the ditch system lost storage capacity and or was maybe filling up and then backing right back up, getting back into the pond. So as a result of that, that's what's precipitating the need to clear the ditch system. You can view it as an L shaped system where it's, the ditch goes south side of Westlake subdivision as well as on the west side side of bordering the airport. And this rental equipment will be used by our school. And this rental equipment will be used by our school team now over one week period to hopefully in the process of recreating it, somewhat removing the brush and trees that exist there, we hope to restore some capacity. The same token though, the pond itself, we wondered is it receiving water from the ditch? So we're looking at installing two backflow preventers at each of the, one is an inlet where the south of the car to be, it receives water in from the ditch. And we want to prevent that through installation of a duck bill backflow preventer. It's, if you haven't seen it, it, don't understand what it is. It's a kind of rubber flaps, two rubber flaps inserted in a round pipe. We have an example right between the high school and the hospital in Fisher. There's at least one, perhaps even two of these duck bill type of backflow preventers. So we hope to do that. We're investigating that. We know the two locations where that would be installed. And then the, the third area of review will be the pond, the bid station itself. We have Metropolitan Pump that orchestrated the, the whole rebuild of the pumps and improvements at that station. Coming in next, next Tuesday and doing a whole array of tests to determine if there's anything amiss with the pumps, anything amiss with the intake pipe. The two thousand and eighteen renovation part of that was triggered because the pumps were getting damaged by the high velocity pulling in rocks from the pond. So that's going to be looked at. We're also going to look at the outflow pipes, whether, whether those are large enough. And so we'll, we'll know more next, next week and we'll report the progress, everything we've learned. Now, those are the three things I thought would be insightful.
I had a question on part three about the providers coming back to do the work in twenty eighteen. And maybe we don't know now, but maybe when they're doing that work, I'd be curious if something that they had designed or planned or thought was going to work back then. Is it? Was it that design or was it a different situation than what they had expected? And if there's any sort of guarantee built into that contract, you know, that the result would be produced rather than just. Or if there's something else.
With this particular vendor, Metropolitan Pumps, they're already, they've been rolling, rebuilding Illinois. And they're really quite a known contractor in the Illinois area and in Kansas as well. And they've dealt with that for perhaps twenty to thirty years. So we have a good relationship and we feel that if there was something that they made a mistake on, they would hold up to it, they would hold it to it.
Great. Just do a little check back with them while they're doing the work this time. Mike, the water mains and the three others going on, these storms keep getting worse and worse. Dustin shared with us an article about Lake Michigan breaking with significant challenges that reached Chicago, so. Supportive. I'm glad we have a good relationship with them and especially for Westlake, it's really good to get this solved in a robust way.
Mr. President, I'm going to approve the equipment rental agreement with tasking instruction in the amount of two thousand eight hundred dollars for use of an oversized excavator with ditch bucket for one week to be funded through the sewer maintenance of the professional services, number two eight zero three zero nine zero one six three one zero five.
There are second. Discussion.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Four to zero.
I have purchase of sewer jetters.
Since you're standing up there, it's like a sewer jetters. Another name for it is a backyard easement machine. It's basically, picture it, you're, that's your garden hose reel on steroids. It's a huge hose reel, one inch wide hose and it goes up to six hundred feet long and it's on wheels. And it extends the, our largest piece of equipment that the sewer back truck. Stends the work of that in tight spaces that we can't otherwise access through some side yard all the way into the backyard. So that the, the backer can do its work of either jetting or rotting out sewers. And we have one, but it's bought in the year two thousand, so it's over twenty years old and it's been inoperable now for a few months. Parts aren't available. This we have budgeted in the capital improvement plan, scheduled replacement this year. And we did receive three quotes. We're not, I think we're hoping to the lowest quote is that one is seven months out. The one if you like to buy is the middle price one and it's available immediately.
April, we have the equipment. No difference of. We are not, we are not. Difference of. So speed with which. Get it. Okay. All right. Thank you.
One, one question, Mr. Councilor. Do we have an idea in the capital improvement plan, what, how much we had budgeted?
Yes, we had budgeted sixty five thousand dollars. This is coming in forty, four thousand nine hundred some over that of which we were able to find other funds that the legislature, the federal office.
This is another factor of the pandemic. I don't, hopefully some of the ARP funds or other funds from the government can help with some of these things. Supply chains across the country and every industry are just really, really messed up. And so in this case, we've got to spend thirteen thousand to get this, but it is a water issue. It's helping us keep water out of the backyards and keep our sewers working. So unfortunately, we were able to find money to.
President, I have purchased the J H J six hundred W H workforce easement machine. Sewer equipment from Native America, sixty nine thousand dollars, sixty nine thousand four hundred and sixty four dollars and thirty cents. With funding for the sewer fund. Eight zero nine one five zero eight six four four five. There are second. Further discussion?
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
And Council President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Four to zero.
Are there no reports? Are there any reports, any reports that you'd like to share?
Well, no, I was waiting. I, I do have a couple of things I would like to report if you don't mind. Thank you. I just wanted to update, speaking of American Rescue Plan funding, we are now in the next step. Dr. Kulturitis, as council president, signed it, our request for payment, which I will email over tomorrow morning right away. So that's the next step. After that, we do need to put together a plan. We are getting guidance and calculators from various reputable people that we work with, AIM, ILMCT. So we're going to put together as much information as we can to bring to council. Before we can spend the money, we have to have an accepted and approved plan. So that's what our plan is. The first thing we'll be looking at is revenue replacement and we anticipate quite a bit, not quite a bit, but the parks will be, we'll make an effort to make the parks whole and then we'll see what we have left and and look at all the funds. We're going to look at every single font and see what we need to do to give them up revenue replaced. The only other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is in, during, in the consent agenda was the May twenty twenty one treasurer's report. And there was in the general fund, you'll notice that we had receipts of one million fifty two dollars, fifty two thousand dollars. That's because of an advance on our property taxes we get every May, so things are looking good. So that cash inclusion was greatly appreciated. So.
Right. Announcements, all time council meetings will be there at seven p.m. unless otherwise noted. Select July twenty sixth, there is no meeting August first. There are the rest of town council. Second. Second. August ninth, no meeting, August sixteenth, regular town council. We develop the question, May, August twenty third, no meeting, August thirtieth. No meeting, that brings us out to adjournment. Favor. Thank you for attending.
Oh, I didn't see John here. Thank you very much. That worked out very well. So. Approval. Can I send you an excerpt? Can, can I send you an excerpt later this week? Is that, is that okay? Or do you need? Yeah, I can. And I'll, I'll type up the minutes. I'll do it of this because the minutes won't be approved from this meeting for two weeks. So do you want it this week or do you want it in two weeks?
So because they've approved it.
Gotcha. And I'll attest to that. Yes.
So there's two, there's this one.
And the.
And the. One's for the settlement, one's, that's for the settlement.
Oh, and that's at the very back of the agreement, I take it. Dustin's out of town. Let's see. Dr. Andy can probably, let me see if I have them there. See. This is, this is something we're developing. Otherwise, I may ask people those or I can make copies of those. Here's the purchase agreement. Oh, I sign in, says I sign in Dustin, or Dr. Andy. We're good. I'll get these signed tonight. I will scan them over to, I'm out of the office tomorrow, it's Wednesday. Okay? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. No, thank you. Oh, this is. I'm good. Yes, I'm ready. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
I want to see your pretty face. All right.
Oh, has, Mr. Jacob. You're filling in. Thank you.
According to redevelopment, we're going to read our meeting for July ninth, two thousand and twenty one to order. Roll call please.
Mr. Dr. Schoen. Different hats now. Ms. Mellon. Mr. Gardner. Excused. Mr. Tulowitzki. And Dr. Kulturitis. And tonight we acknowledge that the John Dougherty is sitting in for the school board liaison, John Kestrel.
Thank you.
So thank you, John.
That brings us down to the public, if anybody wants to speak tonight. Sir, coming over to podium.
All right. You know, and you're interested in the interest and I don't have an answer for you, I'm afraid. Tricia handles the day-to-day minutia of all that and she's not here this evening, but yes, can I get, have your number, Mr. Thomas, and then we'll call you and. Well, you gave us a valid address on Manners, so we weren't worried. You know what? This is a public meeting and you're being recorded. Yeah, let's, let's go off the record here. So.
Yeah. It was kind of a broad question.
Yeah.
narrow question. So broad question is kind of like, um, it's either the word, right? Right. And the narrow question. So I would say let Trish take it correct and answer it to the question. Okay. We get his specific answer. Trish says mine. Still have more questions. I'd be happy to work. I give them ten thousand. You know, there are seminars on that question, right? So I, I just don't know what. Yeah, so I guess you're probably going to owe her. Right, but. We'll, we'll. Let's see what Trish, yeah, we'll see the answer. Let's give Trish a crack.
And she's our town controller. She's out of the office this week and perhaps some of next week. So it won't be, it may be a few days before, and, and she'll help you out. She's very helpful and informative. Thank you.
All right. There anybody online?
No, there is not.
We accept the consent agenda. There are second.
Second.
Discussion.
Ken, Commissioner Schoen, that's your title tonight. Let's go with that. Commissioner Schoen.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Mellon.
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki. Commissioner Kulturitis.
Yes.
Four to zero on the.
There is no business, there is no new business, there are no reports, there are no announcements, that brings us out to adjournment. There are second. Second. All favor.
Aye.
Thank you guys for hanging around.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Hold on. Done. I think we're done. Okay. Sure. I'll see it. You know what? Is Steve?
Great. I hope that's effective.
Maybe there'll be something, first discussion.
Well, I will probably.
They're not unless they're on a winter, winter celebration committee. Yes. I was on the, we had a card before, winter celebration after.
Show is the overall. Wendy. One third, there were three issues. One third. I have not stayed.
Yeah.
Yeah, a little bit of. See, I think at a minimum. To begin and got to take out those.
It's actually, we have, we gave us three sketches and then we addressed a few things and he's coming back with the final sketches. He was very, very good and he gave him a two day timeline and came back a few days early. So we're, we're really happy. And he did a lot of details, so we didn't have much to change. It's not like we had to start, you know, over. So he's, he's good. That David Clayman made a good, good suggestion. So. Very happy with that. He seemed like it. I watched him for quite a while and it's initially, yeah, I liked it.
He seemed like it. I watched him for quite a while initially and yeah, I liked it. And I think we're going to have a really good project, so.
I think what you're saying was.
Last to share.
That for a period of time.
Hopefully, hopefully.
Then. Or survive. If you go back and rescue, like exercise serious. That makes sense to me. But in the acute bay, to go right back into it.
No.
That's against.
It's going to take longer to do it. I think it's a good idea to not try to rush this.
I think they probably took.
Thought it will, it's gonna.
Take five years away. So. So for him to say, when I saw her. We're at her brother's graduation party.
To her and. Some of the worlds that they rode, you were looking at and trying to see what we wanted to include. It definitely a great. When he had.
Headings are better. Memory takes smaller. And he told her he wants.
I wouldn't like to say something.
Thank you, Andy, for taking care of that. I want to say, all right, Leanne, thank you. All I care about is the A P R money.
Yes, it's Wednesday, Monday.
The advantage for come in is I got to come in. I'm sure. True copy of. So it's really. Sure. So really, when I saw the character. Well. I get what I think. Sounds like you're good post on the spring floor and then I. But. But. That's right. Yes. Right.
If you want to join, whoever's here, sit down there and.
Are we zooming or?
Yes, there is a couple of people that said they wanted to zoom, so I will get us logged in in a second. We start that meeting.